All right, seven o'clock. I'd like to call the regular council meeting for May twenty seventh to order. Restore business on the agenda, call for community interest regarding the agenda. Don't believe there's, anybody has anything? So are there any additions, deletions? Anybody have any? No? Can you get a motion to accept the agenda as is? Thank you, all in favor? That is carried. Uh, first item, the, uh, adoption of previous minutes for, um, April twenty second, the regular meeting. May the first, the special land use workshop minutes and the May the thirteenth, the council at home minutes. Are there any errors or omissions?
They look good to me. I'll move them.
Thank you, all in favor? Carry. All right, first order of business is, uh, delegation staff Sergeant Gillis. Thank you very much for, uh, coming.
It was very nice to meet all of you. For those of you I haven't met, I'm Angela. Very nice to meet you all.
And, uh...
Yeah. I seem to get a little wider when I'm at work.
So I'll just, uh, I'll let you go ahead with your report and then...
Yeah, you got. So for those of you who haven't met me, um, I'm Angela. I've got just over twenty years in service. Um, I've been, well, my seventh posting currently, so I've been around. Um, I've been out here since, uh, December, beginning of December, on the assignment for the detached commander position for both here and Breton detachment. So, um, previously I came from Wataus Glen, so I'm familiar with the area. I live out in Wataus Glen County, so this is a fairly easy commute for me, so it's been, been really good and we've got a great, great bunch of people here. So I'll get started with our quarterly report. Uh, great. So just a quick rundown as to kind of what's happening in and around the detachment. So we have one hard vacancy still for Breton, but we are scheduled to get a cadet from Depot. Uh, we're hoping this person is successful in their training. They should be graduating June the thirtieth, and then they'll hit the ground running here with us. Uh, so we will be, uh, pretty much closed in Breton, uh, once they get here. We do have a transfer notice for another Breton member going to Red Deer. However, we're not going to be releasing that member until it replaces his name. So at this point, we are fully staffed. Everybody's at work. Everybody is healthy. We have no vacancies. Uh, we have an experienced police officer that just joined us, uh, as of April the eighth. Um, he brings, uh, nine years of experience with that into police service, so we poached him to be our CMP. Uh, he did three weeks of, uh, just kind of crossover training in Chilolak, and, uh, now he's, uh, assigned to a field coach here at the Thorsby. Um, and he's excited to be here. I guess his dad is a retired RCMP member, so he's looking forward to being out in rural area, and he's doing well so far. Um, we have Golden Days in Habs now as an option too, so we've got some shifts happening out there in and around the cabins in the lake area. Uh, we're focusing on feeding and, uh, making sure that, you know, the seasonal type cabins and stuff like that are, are looked after and, and, uh, just watching out for any sort of property crime break-in interest in the area. Um, so as far as the closure for Breton detachment building, um, we're still waiting on our asset management to do some assessments out there to determine the extent of what may need to be remediated, and then from there, they're gonna have to make some decisions whether or not they put more remediation and money into a fifty-five year old building, or whether they look at other options, um, whether that's a new building or whatever the case may be. Um, we're still waiting on those developments. So as soon as I know something, I will certainly share that with everybody. Uh, service hasn't changed out there. We still police out there. We're still out there on the daily. Uh, the only difference is that unfortunately we can't offer any front counter services at this point because we're not working out of the building due to health concerns. Um, I will share with you, we do have moles in the basement. We've got asbestos issues. Uh, our age back is obviously, like I said, it's a sixty-five year old building, so you can just tell in kind of what the air quality situation may be out there. So for the benefit of everybody and the employees and their health, uh, that's the reason why we've decided to not work out of allocations right now. But rest assured, policing is, is still happening out there. The only difference is, is that response times right now to our western communities, like all the way up to Alder Flats, Buck Creek, places like that, if the members are, say, in Thorsby at the time, we're adding an extra, you know, forty kilometer commute onto that. So, um, we're making our community aware of that, but like I said, we're, we're really hoping that it's not gonna affect our service level overly much. Uh, we're doing body worn camera rollout on the second of June. Actually, I think we're doing our training here in this building. Um, so after that, every member of Thorsby and Breton will be, uh, camera equipped, and, uh, I think that's gonna be a good thing for everybody. So, next slide. So, um, I'm gonna break it down from Thorsby detachment stats, and then we'll do Breton because we're, we're amalgamated, but we're technically, you know, we still have two certain different policing areas here. So overall, we've been really focusing on our property crime, and it's starting to show. Um, we had an eight point three percent decrease overall in our property crimes for a Thorsby area. It was, uh, break-in enters were seventy percent decreased from the same period last year. Theft of motor vehicle went down eighty percent. Um, our theft under increased by twenty-three percent, and a lot of that we're seeing is, uh, the lease site thefts and like rural, um, crime thefts. So, uh, a lot of the copper wire, um, stuff like that.
That never ends.
It, it, it's just always...
Well, it's too high prices right now too. That's probably not helping.
Hundred percent. And, and for us, I mean, we have so many locations in our area. I mean, it's paramount language, but it's a crap shoot as to where they're gonna hit next. So I'll get into that in a little bit as to how we're combating that. But right now, overall, we're very excited with that eight point three percent decrease. On the flip side though, um, our persons crimes have gone up substantially, thirty-three percent year over year here. Um, it, it's kind of an anomaly. We can't really pinpoint why. Um, people are just angry. I don't know whether it's politics. I don't know whether it was the election, but, you know, people are fighting. People are, and it's not, you know, prolific people. It's just, everybody just seems to wanna go out there and, and have UFC nights. So, um, we, we don't really have any way of actually preventing that. It's more of a responsive thing for us, whereas the property crime, we can do things to, to try to, you know, mediate it before it happens. With persons crimes, it's, it's, it's really just hit and miss, so I, I really have no, no way of telling you why it's, it's increased this year, but you'll see from the Breton side, it's the same thing. It's actually worse. So... Possibly, you know, I, it, it could very well be. It could be just the financial and economical situation that we're all in. Uh, but we did have seven more persons crimes for Thorsby, um, year over year so far. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's pretty much it. We'll go to the next slide there, and I'll break it down for you. So again, thirty-three percent overall for persons crimes, so that brought our, it brought things up total wise, eight percent increase, but property crimes down eight percent, six fewer break-in enters, four fewer theft of motor vehicles.
Quick question?
Yes. Um, and here's where we're kind of noticing things. So so far this year, twenty twenty five, we've had three sexual assaults recorded, whereas in twenty twenty four, we had zero for the full year. Already this year, we have thirteen assaults, and for the full year last year, we only had six. So that's where you're really seeing those jump in numbers. Um, we've also noticed our frauds. If you can scroll out just a little bit. Perfect. Um, so we're already at fifteen so far this year as opposed to five from the previous. Um, a lot of this is, you know, the, the phone scams, the online scams. Our senior citizens are being targeted. Um, we've done a lot of, um, media and tried to educate, but unfortunately, those criminals are, are getting very intelligent as to how to take people's money, and people are falling victim left, right, and center. So already at fifteen, and last year we, we had five. So that just goes to show you that they're really targeting people right now. We'll go to the next slide. So now we're on to Breton, and as you can see, persons crimes went up a hundred and twenty-three percent. So like I said, it seems like it's USB every night. Um, break-in enters are down thirty-three percent. Theft of motor vehicles are down thirty-six percent. Theft under actually decreased out there by ten percent. Um, but our persons crimes are, are way up again this year. So, and again, no, no specific grammar reason. I, I couldn't tell you why that is.
Uh, it's like looking at your, your years here. Like it looks like it's been kind of low the last couple of years until it returned to normal.
Yeah, it has. And then all of a sudden, it's, oh, if you go back, or go to the next slide for me, let's just see here. So yeah, you get the overall picture here. Per, property crime is way down, persons crime is way up. And then if you go to the next slide, to your point, again, um, you know, we're at four sexual assaults again in Breton for twenty twenty five. Last year, we had one. Um, back in twenty twenty one, we had four, but the years, like the three years kind of previous, we were, we were doing well.
Low.
It was low, right? So, and when you look at that twenty twenty one, again, you've got to understand that those numbers are a little skewed because that was COVID season, right? And so...
In twenty twenty two and...
Exactly. So persons crimes were off because people, there's a lot of domestics happening. There were, because people are stuck together, right? Um, whereas our property crime was down because people were home. So you weren't getting the break-in enters. You weren't getting all that sort of stuff. So when you look at the twenty twenty one numbers, just be careful with those.
Yeah, don't use that as a really good baseline.
It's, it's not a good baseline because it was just a really, they're, they're off time for everybody, right? But for twenty twenty five, again, we have, we have twelve assaults already versus four, um, all total last year. So, um, again, I, I, I don't know. People are just angry right now. Um, and that's just, that's just...
Are you saying that, like, have you, I'm assuming you've obviously...
Everywhere.
Inciting, yeah, across the province?
Across the province, yeah. Across the province. It's certainly not our communities, um, singled out. It, it's everywhere, and I think it's coming down to just, again, people are concerned about economics and politics and, and all that sort of stuff. And I think there's just a lot more stress out there with people right now, and, uh, you know, maybe they're at their breaking point. So, um, stuff like that kind of happens. But again, fraud is already at sixteen. We were fifteen total last year. So that's really where our numbers are driving right now. Um, so we will, we will continue to look at that, continue to try to get education pieces out there, especially for the elderly, uh, frauds and stuff like that. Um, but yeah, as far as, and, and what's driving that, I, I honestly can't tell you.
There it is.
So just my prediction. If you can go to the next slide. So last year, we, every year we do the annual performance plan, as you know, and we have three priorities for the year. Well, last year it was crime reduction specifically the property crime. Um, our second priority was community engagement, making sure that we're open about in our communities and picking parts. And our third priority was traffic, focusing on impaired driving. So as you can see, with our, um, property crime being a priority, it, it, the numbers are showing that the members are out there. They're working hard. Uh, they're being visible, and it's paying off, um, with the decreases that we've seen. Um, eighteen, over eighteen thousand hot spot checks in the year. That's pretty, pretty substantial. Um, we were doing, um, prolific offender checks for their court conditions as well. Um, four hundred and seventy-two prolific offender checks. Um, so we're, we're keeping people accountable that are supposed to be at home on curfew or, you know, not doing certain things, and that certainly helps. Uh, I can say with the property crime, especially, it's, it's gone down substantially. We had prolific, um, folks move out into our Breton area that, um, are big into the property crime. And within, I, I'm gonna say days of them moving to this real property, there were stolen vehicles showing up left, right, and center. So all we did was have them, we stood out on the ground of the road and waited for them to come by. So, um, for noon, I think we had six of them in jail, and some of them are still in jail. And so that's what's really showing that decrease, right? So if we, if we keep hammering those type of folks where they're the ones causing the majority of what you're seeing as far as stats go, we're, we're doing well. Uh, again, you know, the community piece, um, there were, there were tons of, um, events that the members attended, the parades, the Remembrance Day services. They're very, very active in the school, um, especially, and so throughout the year, that's what they've been busy doing, and it's, uh, it's great that they're so involved and engaged in their communities like that. And then as far as traffic goes, overall, they did seventy-four, um, dedicated check stops throughout the year. They had four hundred and thirteen violator contacts, uh, meaning that there was a ticket written. Um, and then these check stops also resulted in eight impaired drivers, uh, being taken off the road and charged with , uh, immediate roadside sanction. So for this year, let me choose one of the next slide for me. It's not too far off. Um, we're gonna continue with our crime reduction, prolific offender management, because that certainly helps. The more people we have in jail or on condition, um, the less likely it is that you're gonna have property stolen, or a vehicle, or break-in enter, or those type of things. So we're gonna continue to focus on curfew checks and monthly checks, hot spot checks monthly. We are using advanced crime mapping tools, which means that any time a complaint comes in, it goes into our system, we can then map that, and what we get is what we call hot spots. So you can actually see on a map, it kind of looks like a shotgun blast, but certain areas really light up and glow, and that means that that's kind of an area where there's been a lot more crime. Um, so we're, we're using those type of things to, excuse me, target where we send the members to do checks and where we're visible. Um, as far as crime reduction goes, uh, again, we're, our role is to continue to reduce the property theft in our areas. Um, so we're doing special projects to target that, um, and we've also started utilizing our bait program, meaning that we have certain items that we can put out, let's say on a lease site, or let's say on a property. Um, they get stolen, their GPS, we track them, we figure out where they end up, we write a search warrant, we put people in jail. And that's seemingly working very well. So we're actively doing that currently. Um, and again, it's, you know, it, it's kind of a crap shoot, you know, where are they gonna target next? But the more that we put out there, um, and the more word gets out too, listen, you know, that, that the cops have, you know, bait, um, property out there, it, it may just deter certain individuals as well. So we're busy with that. Um, and then again, road safety. We, we do have a few fairly dangerous stretches of highway. We've had a number of fatalities over the last, uh, recent years. Um, so we really wanna focus on continuing our check stops, doing, uh, speed, speed offs, radar laser offs, and education presentations in local schools. So just last week, we actually did impaired and distracted driving presentations to our graduating classes, uh, for two of our high schools. Um, and we're gonna continue to be a presence in the school, and, and hopefully we can maybe avoid a, a fatality down the route. So that's what we're looking at for this year, and, uh, we're, we're well underway with that. Um, and that's really all I have for you, but if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Well, that's one. Go ahead, Teresa.
I was just gonna suggest on Monday is Seniors Appreciation Day in Thorsby.
Oh, in the...
That might give you an opportunity to go speak to a group of seniors to educate them.
Absolutely. Yeah, I will certainly... Pardon me. Do you have a, like a community, uh, senior community center or, like a senior home?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got a seniors community center, but it's a volunteer appreciation over at the complex.
The seniors, I, I can go look at the...
It will be.
Yeah. It has the posters hanging.
Yeah, 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 sorry.
How many years has it been up?
Yeah, it's been in the, in the main...
If somebody would maybe flip me an email with, with the poster of the detail, that we, I can certainly help a member of general there on Monday and pay them with kind of a lunchtime thing.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and certainly stuff like that. If, if you guys have like a schedule of events or something that's going on in the community, if I can spare a member to go over even for, you know, a few minutes, um, make an appearance or whatever, please let me know. Um, we're more than happy to do that. If we're available, we'll, we'll, we'll go, so, yeah.
It's in the field house from ten to one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yes, it's better mentioned.
It's a brunch. They're doing a brunch.
We're doing a brunch session.
Yeah.
That is very cool.
Yeah. If, if somebody can send me those details, we can certainly help, help the members head over there.
That's, yeah, I'll do that for you. Thanks for that, and, and thanks for, uh, being there at the parade there. That was nice, and, uh, there was a lot of people there in the complex.
I, I heard it was well turned out, yeah.
And, uh, it was nice to see the members walking around there, and everybody's being, everybody was, uh, behaving themselves, so...
That's always good to hear.
Any other questions from anybody?
Just a comment, Your Worship.
Sure.
Um, thank you so much for, uh, helping us with a few of these, um, private cases because we're down a CPO right now. So, um, we've been very successfully related to be with the corporal.
Yes.
He's, uh, he's pretty awesome.
Good.
And, uh, being a great help because we can't get back and forth fast enough on, on certain issues here. So we appreciate, we appreciate to you. And I sent a nice note to, uh, Sergeant Gillies as well, uh, because we've got some more information to help you make better decisions.
Okay.
So that was good, and, um, uh, when you're doing impaired presentations, I got a set, two steps of impaired driving goggles that I got when I was working.
Okay. Yeah, we actually, we steal them from our units as well, and that's what we used in the high school the other day, so they got to play with those a little bit.
Yeah.
But it's, it's good to know if you've got them.
I'll just draw along with the detachment.
Okay.
Yeah, that's awesome. We could do that, and, um...
I think they have them going around, pylon, and everything up there.
Oh, totally. Throwing a ball.
Flying around with it, yeah, so, yeah.
I think one of the senses is send marijuana glasses.
Okay.
So that's a whole different experience.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah. And, uh, we've done interviews for a new CPO, uh, so what's probably gonna happen, depending on who the team picks, that CPO will stay where they're at till we get their new appointment rather than just do nothing.
Sure.
And then they'll, they'll come here. So we'll have a fairly experienced, uh, CPO come, so we'll let you know.
Cool.
It takes a little bit of heat off you guys as well when you're out.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. It's, it's, it, you know, like I said, we're more than happy to help, but if we're busy with a priority call or something, sometimes it has to. We don't want it.
Yeah, yeah, and we're, we're pretty careful when we talk to the residents. Look, we don't have the CPAs off. Here, CP are busy. We can put in a call or...
Yeah, we're, we're more than happy to help.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that. No, uh, awesome.
Good. Thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate it, Governor.
Thanks.
See you around.
Sure.
Yeah. I think that's the fire guy, that's not bad.
Well, I think some of the morning was everybody.
Oh, yeah, maybe.
It sounds like all of them.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. We'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just, uh, get a motion to accept the RCP quarter report for information, John? Thank you, all in favor? That is carried. All right, moving on to the next item, seven point one, the Ladue County Recreation Cost Share Agreement. And, uh, I guess it'll be easier if you brought some more stuff back to us on that.
Well, I did bring more stuff back, and then, uh, Dean sent some more stuff, which was the link to where they get the information from.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked about it at the SCSS meeting there, Steve's there on Thursday, and he seemed well over his head on what we were talking about. So he's just forwarding information as you are, so I, I get neither of you. This is your, neither of your wheelhouse, and I understand that.
So I think we've got all the information we're going to get.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I realize that. It's fundamentally a flawed system, but I realize it's not gonna change for today, but it's definitely something that should be addressed moving forward. It, it's inherently flawed in the way the methodology is coming up.
We can talk to Dean over the next, however, I don't even...
He actually seemed very interested. I was sending him more...
Okay.
Explanation of, of what I was talking, because he was, again, like, just right over the...
Cause he did say he talked to you, and then, and then he goes, so now I've included this link, so then we included that in the RFP for you guys. And, um, but I do wanna say that the county today did accept, like, the agreement, like their council accepted it, and they also did, um, where's the email? Did I go on? That the disgusting camera about the rec capital request, we will be sending a letter back to your council in support of the roof inciting project of, of phase one.
Okay.
So, um...
That's really good news.
That's really good news.
Yeah. And just, just on that note, uh, I'm, I'm sure, I don't know if everybody's aware, but, uh, uh, Andrew Bitichenko has, uh, been appointed to a post there in his
Yeah, we just, you know, for tourism, yeah.
So, uh, uh, unfortunately, he was at the parade there, and to leave because his mother passed away that day. So I didn't get to talk to him very much, but, uh, I'm gonna, in the next week or two, I'm gonna give him a call and, uh...
Yeah, he seems very...
See if he can help us with our grant.
He seemed very happy to, to help us with any number of things, and including his, his new, new post there. If anything comes up, he, you know, we're very happy to...
Something comes up, there's a big Renault coming up.
Yeah, but he, uh, he definitely knows to keep us in mind, so, yeah.
So hopefully he can, he can help us with that and put in a good word, and, uh, it'd be nice if we could get it.
So, um, so yeah, if we could just vote on this agreement.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion on it? Yeah, if not, can I get a, a motion to, uh, approve the Recreation Cost Share Agreement for signing? John, all in favor? That's carried.
I'd like to move to provide direction to administration to work with Ladue County to come up with a more suitable methodology than using stats candidate dissemination areas to develop the recreational population for future decisions of said agreement.
Okay.
I got that.
So we'll just, we'll take that resolution, Your Worship, please.
Okay, in the motion? Yeah?
Yeah.
All in favor? That's carried. All right, well, there you go.
There we go. Now we can...
And we will, uh, I imagine we'll be getting some money from them for this, too, because we've submitted our...
Yeah, I sent it to them. I don't know if he took it to them this time, or if it's in June, but...
Okay.
But now that the rec agreement's been signed, at least we'll get the money for, um, twenty twenty five.
Awesome.
Like the advance that we get.
All right, uh, new business, eight point one, tax lien sales. Would you care to comment on that first?
Um, yes, so we need a, so there are three properties going up for tax sale this year. Um, these, ta, these actual properties should have been sold two years ago, so we obtained a ministerial order to get these, um, to allow us to sell these this year and not start the whole process over again, which was granted. So now we just need to pick, um, a date, which we are proposing September twenty ninth, I believe, Jeffy, or twenty sixth.
Twenty, twenty sixth.
September twenty sixth as the date to sell them. Um, and then I just need those three resolutions that are included there, so, yeah.
Okay, so, um, yeah, they go, you say they should have been out two years ago, but we're, they should not prior to that even?
Uh, no, these three from, these should all have been...
Okay, does that bring us kind of up to date then?
Yes.
Okay.
We are up to date and all on track for everything else.
Oh. All right. You don't wanna put it in the spot?
Yeah. No, it's, yeah, we're, we're rolling now. We've got, Angela's great, and she just keeps me on my toes, but she...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Your Worship, I already have some calls about people wanting to know where the package is for the auctions. They wanna, they'll bid and see packages, and we have to wait for council to have its resolution first and its process for that. And we have the terms and conditions of the public auction here, and, uh, what they have to do and what they don't have to do, so we'll, we'll get those out subject to the tax company's direction when it's the right time.
All right, thank you. Tim, no more discussion. Can I get the first resolution that council has set a date for the public auction for tax rules, zero one oh five two, zero one three six eight, zero one five one five for September twenty sixth at the town of Thorsby Municipal Office?
One motion.
All in favor? Thank you. Second, uh, resolution that, uh, the terms and conditions of sale for the twenty twenty five public auction are hereby approved.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? That's carried. And thirdly, pursuant to five five three, section one, subsection half MJ, the addition of all tax recovery cost to the relevant rules is hereby approved.
Yes, you want me to make that as a motion, or is that...
Yeah, in a motion. All in favor? Thank you. I'm just reading Tim's notes here.
Yeah, just the way you said it sounded like a question. I wasn't...
Yeah. Nope, I'll get, all right, well, there you go.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Anybody that, uh, Your Worship, that wants, uh, the terms and conditions, we have it right here in the package, so they'll still on our website in the council package. It can be read and, and, and photocopy, et cetera. So, um, uh, I'll, uh, I'll send the person that wanted these. I'll just send it to him, but I can pull them off our council package. So, uh, what a lot of folks don't know, too, is that if we sell a property and, uh, the, of course, it has to be fair market value, but for easy discussion tonight, if, uh, we get out of what we need to pay the debt owed to us, and there's more money there, uh, we, after the auction, we have to send a letter to the owner, let them know that there's this amount of money left over from the sale, and a trust, they have fifteen years to collect it, at which time after fifteen years, if they do know, please find their, their town. It used to be five years, right? Up into fifteen.
Long time.
Yeah, or ten, I'm sorry, my call is ten. Let's see if it's something else or fifteen. Even ten's a long time.
Yeah. Just as a note, are these three properties that they occupied, Chris?
No.
So none of them are occupied? And we're not kicking anybody out?
No, no.
They, they've been delayed for a long time, and they know it, and they basically walked away from it?
Yes.
Would you say that?
Yes.
Two are empty and one is vacant.
I just wanna point out that we're.
Yeah, two are empty lots and one is a vacant.
Yeah, I just wanna point out that we're being, we're not being mean, we're not being easy, it's just something we have to clean it up and.
Next year we might be mean.
Next year we might be mean.
Next year we might be mean, but didn't mean this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good this year.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, um, moving on to the, um, bearing support. Can you use their property?
Again, I don't know why.
Yeah.
Um, so for the month, uh, what month are we in, this is April, um, so we're basically a third of the way through the year. Um, at the end of April, we had recorded eleven point seven six percent of our revenue. Um, of course, the property tax notices went out in the beginning of May, so that'll be on there next month, and then for expenses, we're at thirty point three five percent. So we're in line, we're actually better than we were last year of expenses, so.
Nobody's working.
Yeah.
All right.
Do you have any questions?
Questions, anybody? No, motion to accept the various point for information?
I don't.
Yeah, on paper? Carry, wow, that's all we got, could've been great.
There's quotes, babe.
Okay, and then quotes, yeah. Okay. Uh, okay, other comments?
I, I wanna know why my taxes on one of my properties went up seven hundred dollars. I have to put up with being woken up at three, three-thirty, four o'clock in the morning with piles of clean snow that nobody parks there. Um, there's been nothing done to this town, my road's starting to fall apart, nothing's done to it, but gravel's smeared on it. So what warrants my taxes going up, and they went up on both places?
Um, I, I can't answer that.
What's your answer?
I guess.
Thirty-fourty-nine, thirty-one, forty-sixth Street, I live, half my property is surrounded by industrial property.
I thought there's no removal, but I dropped that.
Well, guess what, if my taxes are gone up, they better not start work before seven o'clock, and they better not work after eleven, cause I will be complaining.
Well, your, um, your assessed value went up forty thousand dollars.
What?
Why, why, why did it go up that much?
I, I don't know.
My basement is not finished, I don't have a bathroom in my basement, so what are they assessing you on?
I honestly.
But we shouldn't honestly even be answering it, because it is, it is legally a detached thing from what we do, there's an independent assessor who puts an assessment on it. We have no discretion, no say in it, and it's set up legally that way for a region.
Yeah.
Any, any argument you have to make about your assessment, you need to have an assessor.
So you have to go to the assessor, you have till June second to do that.
I just got my tax notice.
Yeah, but you got one week to go, but your assessment was sent out in April.
I don't understand that assessment, it doesn't say my taxes are going up seven hundred dollars.
No, but it does show your assessment value, so that, that was out in April, but you have until June second, because that went out in April?
No, it was, it was not that in, in May.
No, the assess, that's the assessment.
Yeah, and then I got the end of April.
Right.
Still, the remainder of your argument is good, because nothing's getting done, taxes are going up every year, it's just BS.
And, and.
And everybody can say what they want here about costs going up and everything else, but nothing that we can see is getting done. It's just not right.
Can we rest?
They either gotta be held the same or reduced, or some people should be resigning or something. Cory, if you guys were all involved in this other stuff before, where they had this debt and everything else, so, any comments that are there?
So I came very proud when we did last council, term council, I actually have no regrets of that, I thought we did an amazing job, especially considering the. But that being said, as far as the budget or any else, this is, these are not decisions that are made in secret, they're at public council meetings, you're welcome to attend, so. I, I feel like that's a fairly out of place comment, and I'd like the mayor to probably control the meeting.
Like I said, I've watched my taxes go up last year, now they went up again this year. I'm looking at what you get paid, do you charge for every meeting you go outside of this meeting? Because if you do, that should reflect on your wages on these financial reports, so we know, because as far as I'm concerned, some of yous are making five hundred dollars a meeting here. You figure out twelve months and then you, I'm going twenty-four meetings in twelve months, that's two meetings a month, and you don't even have that many meetings, because you take July, August, I don't know if you take June, if there's only one meeting in June, one in, in July, one in August, I don't know if September's back to full meetings, and half the people, half the councilors don't show up to these meetings.
Cory, well, the, the half the councilors not showing up to these meetings is a wild, wild overstatement, but that being stated, our, our, what we actually do make is in the audit financials every year, it's a legal requirement, it's not a secret, it's there for you to see, go back any year you wish to look, and it is there for anybody who wishes to see, it's a publicly available document.
It doesn't show if you get, it just gives a total of what you made. For instance, you made over fifteen thousand, Cory made over thirteen thousand, so if you divide that by twelve months, or, or put, let's say twenty-one meetings, that's working out to pretty good money to save.
So, so, okay, so by that time the case.
And for us to see nothing being cleaned, for us to see the grass not mowed, how long did I fight to get that sign at the, coming into Thorbsby cleaned up? Because it looked like a pigsty, why would people wanna come to Thorbsby looking at that sign full of weeds? Nothing in this town is clean, the street, sweet street was most have gone through, I don't see where it went through on my road. No, wouldn't doubt it. I mean, you, you've gotta understand why people are upset, with their taxes going up, when we don't see anything that is beautifying our town. I've never seen this town look like a dump before, until the last, I'm gonna say eight years. It has been absolutely ridiculous. Everybody used to chip in and help.
Yeah.
Not anymore, why? They were told they couldn't. You can't help us remove stoke, because you don't work for our village. That used to be where, if we had a major snowstorm, anybody that could run equipment was out helping our town workers. Now nobody will help anybody, I don't even know who the hell my neighbors are, other than John Elston and the people that live right across from me, because they've been there for over twenty years.
Okay, all right.
I have one basic question, as far as screening off the yard waste, it's all piled up over there, and nobody's got any place to put their yard waste down, what's going on with that? Nobody's, it's just a sign there saying, don't dump here.
I'll say it on, go ahead.
Thank you, um, we've gone over fifty loads, not just there, but we've piled on our, um, lagoon that a contractor is going to take, and just charges for trucking, he has a, he has approved burn pit, he's gonna burn for us and haul them away. That was commercial dumping, and we got inundated, that fence stays up until we can get those loads out of there, until he's able to truck. At that time, we will move that fence and we'll just use yard flipping, because we know how important that is. Our garbage contractor is coming up for tender, we're doing the RFP right now, part of that is going to be within this new tender, a second bin, the same as your black bin, to put in yard waste that they pick up, um, so that you can dump your grass, clippings, your leaves, all that stuff in that, in the green bins, it's as tall as your black one, and they'll pick it up and take it away, so that, that is going to help, but we got inundated on a weekend by contractor, and now we gotta deal with it, so we're fortunate to find, we say nobody helped, lots of folks helped us, Alec Bowman's gonna help us with this, he just wants the trucking fee, that's all, and he's, he's given us a decent, uh, fee on the haul, but there's quite a few load, so he's here next week, he'll start loading, and he'll start hauling. That's why his hole is sitting down over here, he brought his hole in so he can, and he's bringing in his own fence, cause it's easier to fill the bin with the hole than it is for us to load it with the loader. So, um, I can guarantee you that our team, including myself, was extremely annoyed with the whole situation, because that caused you for us to haul it out of there, because some person took advantage of this. The next question is probably, why can't we put cameras up? A, it's a process with a community impact assessment with a privacy commissioner to put up cameras, because we're municipalities. Uh, we can get some feed, we think, from West Tower, and, uh, I gotta chat with the manager over there to see if there's any kind of feed that we can use, if there's a license plate or anything that we can send and do something about, because the sign's very clear, there can't be commercial dumping there. So, um, we're not happy about it, but we've got it mitigated, it's just gonna be another weekend.
So, yeah, it's gonna be reopened fairly soon, John?
I'm sorry?
Can be reopened fairly soon?
Well, Mr. Bowman's coming next week, he can't do anything this week, uh, depends how many loads he's gotta take out of there, actually, we're dumping dirt and everything, and then, uh, we don't know how many loads he's gonna take off the sewage, and he'll clean that first, then we'll take down the fences, and we'll, we'll watch it and do the best we can. But, but somebody's coming in here in the middle of the night and dumping, that's our problem. So if it happens again, we can hold it open this summer and mitigate it, uh, with the new, with the new, uh, um, waste collection contract that's coming up, gonna be one of the prerequisites in that, in that contract, is to supply the, uh, the green bins for yard clippings and waste.
I can't do anything, I offer a discipline, they lock, they lock it, you go in the office, in the lock. They go in and dump, go in and dump yard waste or whatever, you don't wanna.
I, I wish I had a place you could dump it that was locked, I mean, this, this one we're just using.
Well, I mean, there's, that fence was like that, and it was locked, but a person could access it by coming to the town office during the day, and it wouldn't, you know, nothing like people, like you said, I'm fairly going in there at night and dumping all our crap in there.
Yeah, um, I can't, I can't forcibly close it, because it's not our property.
Okay.
That's why, we're, we're, CNN is being very courteous to us, they're not saying anything.
Yeah.
They do know it's there, when the signal guys are here all the time, so, uh, we'll, uh, we'll use it for the end of this year, uh, and then, depending on the contract and how that works with solid waste, you'll have, hopefully, green bins, you can put everything into this car, you don't have to worry about it. Ladue could have other places, so, but for now, we'll just keep, uh, we'll monitor it and we'll, we'll just keep looking as we can.
All right, go ahead.
Um, thank you, lady, um, I'd be relating to, to this discussion. I, I came here in nineteen ninety-one to visit my son and his family at Ten More Tear, and I came again in nineteen ninety-three, and I said to Carl, when it's time for me, Carl, this is where I want to come, the place was beautiful, people were happy, they cared about each other, the festivities that they put on were excellent, but when I came here in two thousand and five, that had all changed, I don't know why, and I don't know what we've done about it. The other thing is, I've thrown my mind for a while, when the councilors do their reports, and they say I did, attended this meeting and I attended that meeting and so on, those were meetings that are part of that councilor's duties. Now, for someone to turn around and say, yes, I did all of all the meetings that was required as a councilor, and I was the payroll for the, the bingo at the seniors, and I did this and I did that, not relating to council work at all, so why is this even mentioned? We also want to hear about whether the councilors have done their job as required for being a councilor. If they could turn around and say, oh, yeah, I went to Tim Hortons for a coffee and doughnut, yes, for your, for your lunchtime, yes, and I went to, uh, to somewhere else the next day, and yet that is part of her activities as a councilor, nothing to do with council.
I think, I think the councilors, what the councilors should do, and I really think this would be nice to know, is if they're volunteering, after they give their, what they have done, they could also say, I also volunteered at this, this, and this, and it would be nice to know.
Well, that's, that's the, that's why.
What officers are volunteering.
Yeah, that's why it's being in there, it, it's, it's, it's volunteering a community service, it's what it is, that's the reason it's being put in there, to show that you're doing these volunteer things.
Why does it say volunteer?
Yeah, well, we could change that, we can, we can.
You can add it over there for you.
If you could get one of you.
Yeah, no, we can.
It's a public service, it's an act to the public, it's a commitment, and it sees, it allows the residents to see the commitment. And the way I put my reports is in chronological order of the month.
But you're not, by doing that, you're increasing what you are doing, so obviously you're paid for that, cause you attended this meeting, you attended that meeting, which is.
They're not by pay.
Which is not council requirements, the council requirements are this, 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 you attend so many other meetings, you, you, uh, go on to the.
I can assure you, they're not.
We actually have a council remuneration policy, I know that you know that, because I was on council and you spoke to it at great length when we passed it. It explicitly states that unless it is a appointed board, or there's a motion of council approving attendance, nobody's paid for it. I, for example, am, as a private human being, am on the AB Muni's governance committee, I mention that sometimes in things, but I don't, the town of Thorbsby doesn't pay me for that, it's nothing to do with the town of Thorbsby, I, but it does relate to what I do at the town of Thorbsby, so if I mention it, it doesn't mean I'm getting paid for it, it means that I'm trying to do my job as good as I can and bring something to attention.
But do you know what, Cory, the only one, the, the only councilors I see in this room that volunteer is Tracy and Shelley. They're, and I know they volunteer, cause I go, I go sometimes to that senior's single, the rest of the councilors, I'm not out and about in Thorbsby gossiping around about everybody, so I don't see what the other councilors do, if they're at this or if they're at that, I prefer to be at home where I know nobody can get me in trouble. So to say you volunteered, I'd like to know where you volunteered.
Volunteer stuff, I actually go to my way to not put it, I, I agree with that, it has nothing to do with my role as council, but, but just because somebody mentions something that they went to or something that they're bringing up or is in their report, doesn't inherently by default mean they got paid by the town of Thorbsby for attending to it, was my point. And I, I agree, but the volunteer thing that doesn't directly relate to council, I, I also don't think it needs to be in there and doesn't have any relevance, so. That's, I guess, a matter of whoever's writing the report, however they wish to write their report.
And as well.
But just cause it's in there doesn't mean it's a paid meeting.
No, like commissioner of oaths, that's just an act of duty, and I can do that three times in a day, and it's all on my own time, and somebody will say, oh, how much do I owe you? Or can I give you a gift, it's like, no, I'm not allowed to accept pay for that. So that is volunteer, hundred percent.
Okay, see, we don't know that, how many people in this village know that unless they were a councilor previous? And when my husband was on council, I didn't wanna know anything, cause I didn't want anybody fighting with me about what was going on in this town, cause I'm a fighter and there would have been, so I didn't know, and.
No, I can assure you that what's on my list, I'm not getting paid for eighty percent of that.
Like, when my husband was on council, he got paid for his meetings in this office, when he went to the old head library, he went to the library here, he refused to put them in his pay.
Yeah, and, and, you know what, that hasn't changed, it's like Cory said, we have the, we have the policy there, it's stated in there, what do you get paid for and everything, and that hasn't changed, and it hasn't gone up, a lot of it hasn't gone up.
The policy goes, it actually did include, uh, originally since the days of Jim, there had always been an inflationary increase in there, that, for the last eight years, we haven't took. So we've actually foregone taking the actual increases that went with that policy.
Yeah.
So, I mean, people don't know what volun, what you volunteer for, I didn't know if commissioner was, was volunteering.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's nice to know.
No, a hundred percent, so.
Because if somebody now comes to me and says, well, yeah, Gerald, when he was. Because if somebody now comes to me and says, well, yeah, Gerald, when he was the commissioner of Oath, he probably got a hundred dollars. I can say, no, that's not true.
I know, I know Tracy's been listening to this. I never list money. I just don't.
I don't.
I do lots of them, but I never, never do.
Yeah, but people don't know that.
True.
And they probably think you do get paid, which is nice to know.
You, you, under the MGA, you're not allowed to. And any, any counselor, any elected official is automatically a commissioner for Oath as long as they're in the office, a term in their office.
Not in order of.
And that's, that's province-wide, anywhere in the province. And they are not entitled to take the fee for their services.
Uh huh. Which is nice to know. Thank you.
I also signed the council pay, pay sheet. I can assure you in the three and a half, well, almost four years coming up that I've been here, I know what they're volunteering, what they're doing, their pay. They haven't got a pay raise, nothing's up to ours. They have, if I just add, if they don't buy candy for the parade or if they wanna go to a conference, that's all loaded on here and there's, I wouldn't sign them if I thought there was any issue because I'm not gonna lose my career over it.
Yeah.
Kevin, you next?
Do you have any questions? If I did, I'd tell you. I don't play her out.
What we call my, I have, is people who don't want to keep telling me. I don't mean that in a bad way, but I mean, I'm in a town too, but I've learned some stuff coming. And like, to me, that's the only way you're gonna know because I don't do a whole lot online.
And I don't wanna come and bother you guys all the time. Well, that's where your brothers at my office is.
I know, but they're busy enough in the town.
That's okay.
People in this town would rather bitch about everything than come and learn what's going on.
But they have no reason to.
Well, now that you said that, I've got something to say. I agree with you a hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Yeah.
It's much easier to go on Facebook and crap and spread rumors, have gossips, when all I have to do is walk into the office, her door's open and she'll tell you without the bullshit.
Yeah.
But they refuse to do that. It's much easier to go online, bitch, start rumors, start crap.
Yeah. Now you know why I never leave my house in this town.
Sorry?
I said, now you know why I never leave my house in this town. This is just a gossip place.
I just got stripped taken off of me with somebody that wanted big fight and I wouldn't play with her. But I called her out and I've got no problems in calling out people because if you don't call them out, nobody else hears that story. Now it's you and her and you go about your own way.
Yeah.
From what I've seen and from the times I've come to this council, and I believe I've only missed one meeting here, these guys have done a hell of a good job. Some things I think can be approved on, okay? But until I get on council, I can't do, a girl loves it, okay? What I will tell you is what I see is three groups in town fighting. That's what I see. Okay? And this is my opinion, not anybody else's. If they get off their high horses and just sit down and talk it out, you could have this community like you guys have talked about before. But that's human nature.
If them groups would volunteer, we would have all kinds of stuff in this town for kids other than hockey, which I don't think anybody in this town will ever have a Wayne Gretzky. So hockey is another one thing they do for this town. Nothing else matters but hockey. And it's always been.
Well, I gotta, I gotta disagree with you there because I've been to this center here that the IRS, why in the town basically runs, okay? There is a pile of stuff there for people to do. If they would go and they would look, but it's much easier to ask a stranger, well, what can I do in this town? Well, that's what you do in the, you talk to a stranger. There's no human reaction. There's no human verbalization anymore and that's causing a lot of problems, a lot of stress. Like that police officer said tonight, people locked in their houses and now they're coming out and there's so much frustration there, they don't know how to get it out. You know, we, we, we just, it, it's sad. It, it's just really sad.
It is.
But there's nothing that you could do, you could do, Cory could do, Tracy, any of these people that could do. It's up to you to start somewhere. Because you can't tell, you tell somebody else what to do, they're gonna go, who are you to tell me what to do? And it, it, it's, it's fair, it's honest, you know?
I find this town has just gone downhill. Like I hold the door open at the post office or at the bank or at the drugstore. I was raised that way. If somebody's coming and you're opening the door, damn, I'll hold the door open for them. Never do you hear a thank you. And when I hold this, when somebody holds the door open for me, I always say, thank you very much. And I make sure they hear me. And how's the time? Like, are you scared, John?
No offense, but yours.
My kids are taught the same.
Yeah, but generations have changed. We're in a totally different type of generation now.
We're in a generation where they, they expect everything's given to them and it's always ladder and it has to be given to them or there's trouble.
Younger men are.
Go ahead.
I just wondered about this water pipeline that was supposed to go to Enoch. Anything gone, going on with that? Last I heard, a long time ago, we had a lawyer looking into everything that's going on smoothly. We paid a lawyer to look into stuff for us, for grants from the federal government and this and that and we're supposed, we were supposed to sell water to Enoch possibly. They were, there was some talks going on about that. Haven't heard anything about it since, but I haven't actually gone to see you either. I know that.
Yeah, you can come see me. Your worship, I can, I can update you a bit. Enoch was, was amusing situation just to see, so that, that wasn't a given. We've, we've put out a joint press release that we're now working with Latonton County Number Ten for regional water. There'll be more updates coming on that and there'll be eventual public hearing to go here all about it. So I haven't kept anything from anybody, but starting something like this takes a lot of background work and you'll be kept fully in the loop at the time of legislation allows it to come and upcoming soon.
And I know it's hard because all these places got wells.
It's very, it's a very lengthy process, the whole thing.
Talk to any village, any town, they don't want nothing to do with Thorbsby or their bills.
I, I can tell you one thing, one good thing today that Donna, maybe you can tell me, we had a kickoff meeting for our bulk water station. If you want to fill in with that.
For sure. What we're going to do is we had all the engineers, the prime contractor and everything there this morning at nine o'clock, had to do proper kickoff meeting, debris for the bulk water station. Construction updates will happen with that as we get going. That's slated to start in two weeks. Also today, our, our water, our water team that does all our breaks, they're coming to pave all the water, all the water break gravel spots and they'll be here Friday. That's all gonna be taken care of. We've got, so the engineers are still working up the design on Fifty Third. Once the design is done and the tender has been sent and awarded, we'll update you on that Tuesday. Stay tuned on construction updates. We've also been given permission from the engineer that one of the streets that is the worst up in that area of Fifty Third.
It's Fifty Fourth.
It's Fifty Fourth, thank you, city. We've got to scarify it and turn it back to gravel. There's no road there. So the engineer has given us permission to take a look at that and the group that comes to look after Fifty Third, they have a, any contractor will have a scarifying machine which means busting up what little asphalt is on that street and we will move it and gravel it.
Bylaw officers driving around or whatever, we still have one, we're seeing that, but these places like on the main street here that are terminated junkyard, virtually that's right from, right across almost from Fifty Third or in between. Fifty Third Avenue there, there's another one just down the street from the main street there that's got more collectible junk and skidews and trail bikes and everything. And there's just a junkyard. And the other guy has an auto disassembly place there. I think right on the main street pretty much all the way from his house right back into the grides. There's several vehicles there. It's just a trash, trashy junkyard. I just wonder if the bylaw officer has been looking at any of that stuff.
All the time. There is a certain amount of time we have to do to talk to them, give them time, then we have to send orders out. We send the order out to, to clean and of course, we won't get our new bylaw officer now till June, so there's been a, there's three we're actively working on right now that are.
There's not one quit then?
No, 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 no. We just, we finished the interviews to replace them. And, which is good. And so what happens is when a police officer moves from one jurisdiction to another, they have to have a new appointment from the Solicitor General. That takes sometimes four weeks. So we decided that, I think we've made a selection. That selected person will stay at his current municipality and keep getting paid and working there while he's getting his appointment. Once his appointment comes, it comes to us through Calmar.
Yeah, I just wondered if anybody was looking at them.
We, we are aware of them. We've got three right now that are very serious. We're paying attention to those right now. We know where they all are. We will map them. It's just.
One's just driving right through town, like I said, it's right on the main street there, this past Fifty Third.
I know. It, it sounds like the countryside because we don't do anything. And, and come to my office one day, I'll tell you the whole process. I'll lay it out for you.
All right.
I'll lay it out for you. And I have this big giant Bible to follow.
I don't live near the.
No, I know you don't.
Living in this town, it's just a mess and doesn't do anything. What this lady was saying about the way the town looks, everybody is driving right through the main street.
But what, I, I'm gonna say this, this is not an excuse, your worship, you're a commissioner and council. It's not that we're not doing anything. I can't come on your private property and start messing around. None of you, none of you, I can't. So I have to go through this lengthy process of giving you an opportunity, talking to you a little bit, giving you an order, if you break that order, there's something else that has to come out. We don't wanna get Kingsman's orders all the time. We may have to in a couple. Unsightly premises are not, issue a ticket, we're done. It doesn't work that way because it's private property and the province is extremely strict with private property. Do I agree with you? There's messes absolutely. I've cleaned up properties before in my career in municipality where they're all clean and beautiful, within five days they're full again.
Well, they just pull out on a acreage.
Oh, even the counties are cleaning that up. They don't move on there either. They're, they're hoarders, they're natural hoarders. So I understand it's, it's frustrating. All I'll say is you have to have someone sitting in my chair that's really patient and follows the rules. Otherwise we get sued, we don't like that. They just taxes are really low.
It's getting more patient.
Come on my yard.
I, I have to be patient according to the rules. There are some, I think you get a bulldozer in right now. I can't, but that's assured we know.
We've had this conversation many times. Not the first time.
So what's happening with that?
Donna, you can, I gave money, that was the first thing I talked to Donna about, same thing.
You could clean up this town with yes law. There's certain property, I won't be telling you what's happening with certain properties because we're in a legal and police issue, okay? As soon as I can, I will, but we usually try and keep that, if I report on property, they'll never give you the address or the name of anybody. It's just going to be cleaned up, these and these and these, because I can't, I can't disclose that. But I understand the frustration. I don't take it personally, I really don't. And we try and do discuss as we can for council and to, to work on it, but people, they just do what they do. I'll say that one. They just do what they do. So we have to go through a lot of hoops and the province dictates it, demands it, so.
It, it's, it's a sad day when you don't take any pride in your own residence, but that's what's happened. I mean, you know, I, I can, I can go down in my block and I can, I'm not saying I'm the first guy to cut my grass or help my snow, but you never come by my place and see where it's not like that.
Mine's for the dandelions, but I don't cut my grass, they mate and nobody should. That's for the bees.
The dandelions is a tough thing, you know? I mean, it's, if, if you don't, you do yours and the neighbor doesn't and even if, even if everybody does it, they have a way of sneaking in there. And of course, now with the environment, now they're all saying, well, it's not good to get rid of your dandelion because it's hard on the bumblebees and honeybees.
And there, but it's not fun. What are you gonna do with a dandelion?
It's.
You just answered my question and I wanted to know if you guys are tending on spray.
I hope not.
No. Anything we.
It's just, it's just, I don't think you'll ever, I mean, you can go anywhere in the county and, go ahead, John.
I just had a question for clarification. You were talking about ripping up that one road. I don't know if you could explain a little bit to why, so I would love to see if we're taking roads and not making roads.
Yeah, this, this road, Councilor John, has no waste in it at all. Like this is right from Jared, the engineer, he looked at all that, those roads up there.
Most of our roads don't, that was particularly egregious.
That was particularly egregious. It was, at our road plan, it is number three on our, number three on our road plan, it's not gonna last. So when Jared took a look at it, he said, there's no road bed at all, nothing there anymore from years and years of not doing anything, right? And it's just the road has, has devolved itself into nothing. So what he's asked, he's, he's given us permission to do is scarify what little asphalt is on the top. Our guys are capable enough to, to blade the road and fix it. He'll be there to take the measurements and that. And then he said, gravel it. And I said, okay, does that do damage to our storm sewer systems that are in there, curb and gutter? He said, it's been like that for years. He said, you're not gonna damage it anywhere. So he said, just gravel it, those potholes will stop. What's happening too is the water's getting underneath that little bit of layer of asphalt and it, and it's creating those fissures underneath, underneath the potholes even. So we've only been given permission to do that one road because it's so terrible. If we can get it done on the third round, we might switch it to fourth and move the end where we go to the raw water ponds, do that as third and this one as fourth. But he said, in order to, we can't fill potholes anymore, or we can't do anything to it. Granted, we've been putting gravel just for now to help, help folks, but we gotta stop. So once those two blocks are tendered, he's gonna make sure that the, the winning company has a scarifier and that way we can pull up that asphalt this summer and then we can work on it and get it better.
And then eventually we'll be paid, we'll do all the.
It'll be all done properly.
No, we get undrivable right now.
Terrible. Terrible. So at least we can do something. We just couldn't do anything before because Jared wasn't sure. And after this winter, he said, the base is completely gone. So in a way, that's kinda good because we're not gonna hurt it any. So, and we're not gonna hurt the, the deep structures anymore, not gonna hurt the water, the sewer. There's been no breaks, there's been no issues. So he said, we'll just rip off the top of the asphalt and you guys can level it out and there we go. So that's why. I'm kinda glad, actually. I'm kinda glad.
Sounds good.
So actually ladies, just to verify here, so we're supposed to be having two roads done this year. So I saw you have two and a start of one. But a start, no, but do you understand what I'm saying? You gotta start somewhere, right? Because it's all cost money, great?
Yeah, just that, that section of road that we're paving is seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
It's not just the road.
Now, what's the road in the under, like we're doing underneath?
What road is Fifty Third up?
Two blocks.
Which road is that?
Down, the one that's really bad.
Towards the reservoir there?
All K two were during the pandemic and then.
Correct.
That whole road?
Well, two blocks.
The first two blocks and then we've got a three-year plan to do it, but we can only do so much at a time.
Because it's just, it's too expensive.
We're gonna do the first two blocks off of Main Street there.
Yeah, so to give you an example, Debbie, so that's seven hundred and seventy thousand for those two blocks with the underneath done to like the pipes and stuff. And our grant from the government, per year for capital, is three fifty. So we don't, like, we've saved money, we've saved grant money for a few years to help pay for just two roads. Like, when people say, why, two blocks. When people say, why can't you fix the road? That's why we can't fix the road.
But there's provincial elections eventually, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no sense doing the top part if you're not going to do.
And do the underneath, right? So it's very expensive. And you think you're talking, if you wanted us to fix every road in this town, you're talking, you wouldn't be able to lift it, because you couldn't afford it.
Well, that's why I said, why aren't you fixing my road? Jared, when they built that road, it was two or three feet down.
Oh, yeah.
I couldn't even get off my curb. I had to go down the back alley to get out.
We follow the swamp.
We follow, the engineers, the engineers have a road plan, red, yellow, and green. And, and the road has to be really bad. Like, we have to do the really ugly ones. Yours is bad, but not ugly yet. So we'll watch it. When it gets ugly, we'll fix it.
I'm going to start sitting into them rocks at your trucks when you go down there.
But they did, but they did the block here.
They did, they replaced it under her house, though. That was cool.
They did.
Saying what?
That, you know, we come down forty-six and I turn by your house, and they fixed that rough spot. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I seen West Tower had a big truck parked on that parking lot.
Yes, it does.
And they would park there for a couple of nights. Well, for one night, they parked there. And then when they left, instead of doing all the alley and driving out, they drove off the curb. Like, that's really good for our stuff. I would have seen that they would have got it.
She's calling me.
All I can say in conclusion, your worship, just to finish this off, is that a lot of, well, you start this room, and we're going to seed the boulevard tomorrow. Start that rumor. We're going to clip off the top of the.
Who am I going to tell? My husband that's sitting in my china cabinet?
Absolutely.
That's the only one I talk to.
And we'll clip off the top of the weeds, and we're going to heavily seed it, and we're going to fertilize it, and we'll water it, and it will be grass very soon. So we left the weeds, we kept the seeds.
Weather dependent?
Weather depending. Yeah, if it's raining tomorrow, we can, because thanks for going to seed.
It's supposed to be really windy.
Yeah, yeah. So there's that. And, and one last comment that I know folks, we've told, we've told folks a lot, I've told folks a lot, they go in my office. We've done a lot in this town in four years. The sad part is, it's underground.
So it's not in people's seed.
That's exactly right. You, I will say this, and I'll say it till I'm blue in the face, not being mean or anything. You had one river pump for eight or nine years. That's it. It goes out in the winter, and we got the new river pumps here this year. But if you didn't have a pump going in the winter, with no other pump to start, we'd have to get potable water trucks here. So a lot of what we're doing is fixing pumps, getting new pumps, rebuilding pumps, fixing pipes. It's all underground.
Now, that water line you, you're talking about going to a tap with, do, do, does Thorsby not own the water lines from Esso Salt to, to the town? Do the lines already there, that go that way?
We like the Wizards Lake.
We, we, we have a, we own the line from Beaufort to Thorsby and from Beaufort to the river.
So not out to the lake?
Wizards Lake too.
And out Wizards Lake, but we aren't using that one. It's another six miles to where the old Wizards Lake gas plant is. And then we have water rights to pump water from the North Saskatchewan River and our waterways.
Oh, I thought they had the lines all the way to that gas well plant.
The line, I think, might have went there at one point. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But they're not being, you know.
They're not being used?
Yep.
Could they be used?
Possibly. We're, we're looking at all these, these, all these things that you're talking about, Debbie. It's all in the works. It's just, it's, it's very, very slow. It's very, it just doesn't happen.
Yeah.
You know, if this was, would have been done twenty-five years ago when we got the water license, we wouldn't be talking about this now.
And, and I think, to just continue on with what Donna was saying, like, everything we've done has been underground or fixing pumps or whatever. And it's all in preparation to do regional distribution, which is the only thing that's going to save this town. And so without fixing all of that first, there, you wouldn't have a town. Because if we can't do water, this town isn't going to survive, because it can't afford to survive.
Like with our bulk water stations that hopefully is going to be open, sure. We don't know how much revenue we're going to get from it. We might be very, very, very surprised.
Yeah.
Don't know.
I mean, we know what Kelmore's doing, but that's, that's a revenue generating thing.
It's something that we never had before.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. And so we're, we're, we're making progress. Unfortunately, progress in a municipal environment is slow. And it's not that we're not working hard, it's not that we're not trying to do things for you guys, trying to fix stuff. But we unfortunately inherited, and I know you've heard it a million times, a big mess of stuff that's been neglected for a very long time. And like Donna said, if that river pump would have went down in the winter, we would have had to bring in potable water, or you guys wouldn't have had water here. And that would have cost you.
Is that what it costs you?
You, the taxpayers.
Additional, additional.
Yes. So, I mean, we can't unfortunately move forward until we.
Well, you make enough money off of me for the water.
Your water hasn't gone up since two thousand and fourteen.
I pay ninety-seven dollars a month for not one ounce of water used there. I have one property that I do not use one ounce of water in. And I pay ninety-seven dollars a month.
All right. Is there anything else?
No, I, that's enough for me. I'm just kicked off.
Okay, thank you very much.
I wonder if that living with her, Lynn says she'd be sending a new email or something.
Yes, and, and she. Yeah, we're going to take a, take a ten-minute recess, and we'll come back on camera.